That we be able to study a portion of the word of God tonight. I want, I, I, I know what, what I wanna say tonight, I know, I don't know how it's gonna flow out. And for those of you that served with me for, for some time, y'all know how that goes. I have a flow in my head of what I wanna do. But we'll see how it flows as I wrote an outline for myself to kind of keep me following. I don't know how it gonna flow, but it is my prayer that it's something will be said that will bless you as we continue our series of lessons on detox. If the detox series has blessed you thus far, can y'all give me some emojis? Let me know that God's word has done something these last few weeks that has helped you in, in your individual life. And so, uh, when I see the emojis come and bless it, bless it, bless it. So we're thankful that, that the word of God has been a blessing to you. And tonight, uh, I don't know who this word may touch or who it's for, but I believe it's gonna touch somebody in some way and some form. If you will, tonight, turn with me to the book of Mark, Mark chapter eight. And, uh, I'm gonna read from the NIV tonight, Mark chapter eight. And I want you to, uh, start reading, we're gonna read verses twenty-two through twenty-six. Uh, twenty-two through twenty-six in Mark chapter eight. And I'm appraised as something is said that will be able to bless you as we read, uh, the word of God tonight. Mark chapter eight, and meet me at verse number twenty-two. The Bible says, "They came to Balsadah, on the land of Balsadah. And some people brought a blind man, begged Jesus to touch him. He took the blind man by the hand and led him outside the village. When he had spit on the man's eyes and put his hands on him, Jesus asked him, 'Do you see anything?' He looked up and said, 'I see men or people, like they look, they, they look like trees walking around.' Once more Jesus put his hands on the man's eyes, then his eyes were open. His sight was restored, and he saw everything clearly. Jesus sent him home, saying, 'Don't go into the village.'" Uh, tonight, as we continue our study, uh, on, on detox, I want to lift this subject from this text tonight that I believe will bless you. Uh, from the subject, you ain't seen nothing yet. Uh, if we was in the audience, I would tell you to look at your neighbor, but since we on here, just put in the chat box, you ain't seen nothing, nothing yet. Um, to, tonight, as we begin to continue our study and on detox, um, I, I want you to know tonight that if you are a Christian, if you are a child of God, it is the greatest decision that you can ever make. Um, I, I want you to know that when you name the name of Christ and decided to put Christ on in baptism, it is the greatest thing that you could ever done upon this earth, the saving of the soul. I, I, I lifted the text in second Corinthians chapter five, verse seventeen on Sunday, where the Bible says, "Therefore, if any man be in Christ, he's a new creature. Old things have passed away; behold, all things, right, become new." So, so we are thankful tonight that by nature, by us being in Jesus, that God has called us the salt of the earth. He has called us the light of the world. He has called us the, a city that is set on a hill that cannot be hidden. Peter would say to us that we are a procurer people, that we are a royal priesthood. However, like anybody, like you and I know that just because we're children of God and we're people of God, as we discussed on Sunday morning, we still too struggle in our flesh. Uh, tonight, I, I want us to get this because I, I want us to understand that what we're trying to do as a local body of believers, that, that as a local body of believers, we want to paint a picture of Christianity from a biblical perspective, and we don't wanna paint a picture from our American eyes perspective, that we understand as the body of Christ, as the church of my Lord, we, you and I understand as the people of God, what God has called us to be. However, you and I oftentimes, we have a tug-of-war going on between our flesh and our spirit. And it's interesting that God has given us the antidote. God has given us what we need to help us win the battle against the flesh. Now, I, I need us to say, I need to say this. Uh, the Bible says, "All scripture," right, "is given by the inspiration of God, and it's profitable for doctrine, for reproof, for correction and righteousness, that the man of God may be perfect and thoroughly furnished unto all good works." So understand tonight that, that you being a child of God is a privilege. You being a child of God, you have access to the Father. Amen. You can go to God on your own behalf. I wish I had a church tonight to know that it's okay to have other people to pray for you, but if nobody else will pray for you because of your own relationship with God, because you are a royal priesthood, you can talk to God on your own. And so, and so I want us to see this from a perspective that it's a need for detox. It is my prayer, and it's been my prayer for the last few weeks, that you and I understand that everybody who's on here tonight need, uh, to make preparation to detox your life so you can actually live out the best life that God intended for you. Can I tell you, you really ain't seen nothing yet until you detox? Can I tell you, until there is a removal of toxic thinking, toxic behavior, and toxic influences, that you will never, ever be able to see the best you that God wants for you to see? Until you make up in your heart, and until you make up in your mind that what you're going to do as a child of God, you're going to address your own issues. You're gonna address your own stuff, the stuff that you've been hiding, the stuff that you've been sweeping under the road, the character defects that has been holding you down, until you begin to say, "God, I'm ready to detox." You will never see the best version of you that you need to see until you start this detox process. So we've been going through these steps, right? And so on Sunday, we looked at step six and step seven, right? And since we looked at step six and step seven, I want to recap that tonight from this particular text to help you and I to understand that what happens when you really take these two steps. You will, God will be able to allow you to see stuff beyond your imagination about you, amen, that you need to do to become a better you. Now watch, remember, remember what step six. I'm, uh, we did step six and step seven together. Let me bridge the two together, and then we'll look at the text. So step six, remember what step six is. It is ready, we're, we're readily entirely ready to help God remove all our defects and character. We talked about on that on Sunday, that if we're going to detox properly, that we must be ready to have God to remove all our defects and character. What does that mean preacher? It literally means that you are ready for God to show you stuff about you that you don't even know that's, that's wrong about you. In other words, there are some things that we are aware of based upon the inventory we took. There are some things that we know that we gotta do better at, but there are other things that you don't even know that offends God. So God says, "The more you get closer to me, the more I will reveal to you some things you gotta do about you." And so step six suggests that we gotta be ready to have God to remove all our character defects. I'm sorry to tell you tonight, child of God, I don't care how much scripture you know, you got some character defects. I don't care how long you been in the church, how long you been in Jesus, you got character defects. I, I, have I told you already that you not perfect? Have I told you already that you have, you would never be able to cross every T and dot every I? Have I tell, have I told you already, there is no such thing as perfection, and that you have arrived when you become a child of God? So step six says that we gotta be ready for God to remove all our character defects. But watch what step seven, as they, as they, as they, uh, are very connected to one another. Step seven says, "Humbly ask God to remove our shortcomings." Now I told you on Sunday morning that God can't, you can't ask God if you not ready for him to remove your character defects. He can't help remove your shortcomings if you not ready for him to reveal some stuff about you that you don't even know that's wrong with you. And tonight, I, I need us to see this clearly because although you are a child of God, that's wonderful. Although you have been bought by the blood of Jesus, you have been called out of the world into the kingdom of God's dear son, I need you to know tonight, I need us to embrace the fact that being a child of God also means there is a struggle in your life. Now, if you don't struggle with your flesh, you ain't honest tonight. If you don't struggle with, 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 with doing right versus doing wrong, you ain't being honest tonight, that you gotta embrace the fact there is some stuff about you that you yourself gotta do better. It ain't about the person next door, it's about the man in the mirror. Now, I need to show you this because in this particular text, man, this blessing, this bless my, in my, in my own personal studies. Uh, I got happy studying this all by myself, and I, I'm gonna get happy repeating it tonight. But this text tailor to teach us some stuff. Three things in the text, the text tailor to teach us that I believe that will bless your life, that God says, "I'm ready to show you something you have not seen the best version of you yet until you detox." So there are three particular things that I think needs to happen if we're going to follow step six and step seven in order for God to show us the best version of us in Jesus. The first thing I need to show you tonight, that if we're going to detox properly, wait a minute, remember what detox is? It's a removal of toxic thinking, toxic behavior, and toxic influences. So watch the first point, wait for it. Be selective on who you call friend. Now I know that, I know that, I know that really is elementary to some because some of us think we got it down pat, and we think everybody is our friend, everybody that laugh and hee-hee-gaga in our face, they care for us. But I'm gonna show you in this text tonight that if the detox is gonna happen the way God wanted to happen, if you gonna really, God gonna remove your character defects and help you with your shortcomings and remove those things. See, you gotta realize there are people around you that are contributing to your downfall. Oui. There, there are people around you that ain't making your life better, but they're making your life worse. There are people that you love being around, that are not adding value to your life, but they are taking away from your life. And the Bible clearly teaches us in this text that we gotta be very selective on who we call friend. We gotta stop giving that title to everybody, amen, somebody. And can I tell you tonight, everybody ain't your friend. And it's alright because just because they ain't your friend, don't make them your enemy either. Do you not know that being a friend, that's an investment? To be a friend, that's commitment. To be a friend is something beyond, amen, of saying, "We just because we like the same colors and like the same food and like the same type of movies, that don't make them qualify to be your friend." So the text tonight teaches us, be selective on who you call your friend. Before I show you, look at the text, let me give you a few scriptures, uh, 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 scriptures tonight to help us because sometimes we understand, we gotta understand friendship from a perspective that friends give us rightly, uh, godly advice. Uh, I've, I've told you before, all freely advice ain't godly advice. But godly friends will give you godly advice, bless the name of Jesus. Just because they are free and make sure the friend, they are free and they'll give you godly advice and not just what you wanna hear. I want you to look at proverbial chapter eleven, verse fourteen, watch what it says. "Where there is no counsel, the people fail; but in the multitude of counselors, there is safety." In other words, godly friends give you wise counsel. Godly friends, uh, uh, they are, they are, they are direct you in the right direction, amen. Proverbs chapter twenty-five, uh, twenty-four rather, verse five, says, "A wise man is strong; yes, a man of knowledge increases his strength; for by wise counsel you will wage your own war, and in a multitude of counselors, there is safety." Woe is the person who don't have nobody they can talk to that can give them wise counsel. Woe to the person who feel like that they wanna be isolated on an island to themselves, and they don't have anyone to pour back into them. The Bible says that there is safety in a multitude of counselors. Watch what proverbial chapter fifteen and verse number twenty-two says. It said, "Plans fail for lack of counsel." Oui. In other words, there's some stuff that fall in your life, and there are some valleys that you are in, there are some storms you are in because you didn't listen to nobody counsel. Oui. There, there are some jobs you took, and you didn't even talk to God or no wise counsel about. There are some marriages that you got involved in, and you didn't even say anything to the Lord about it or anybody about it for that matter. "Plans fail for lack of counsel, but when advisors, they will succeed." Now, I need you to understand tonight, uh, as we, as we push this point, be selective on who you call your friend. I want you to know, can I, I just, if I got time, can I tell you there are four types of friends? Y'all got time for this? If y'all, just give me a few minutes, and I'm almost done. I'll be done with this point in just a minute here. But I really need to help somebody with this because the text gonna teach us something that I want us to see about true friendship. But you gotta be very selective on who you call your friend. So I need to show you four types of friend real quickly. Um, the first type of friend is what I call the pretender. Yeah, there are folk around you that pretend to be your friend. In other words, there are people who will act as though they are for you, but really are against you. Mm-hmm. There are people who have no, no problem with laughing and joking and telling you good job, but really in their heart of hearts, amen, they are just a pretender. Uh, it reminds me of a story of a mosquito. A baby mosquito went out from his mama, and he went out that day, and he came back and he says, "Mama, everybody liked me." He was on the whole day, the baby mosquito, "Everybody liked me." And, and, and mama said, and, and mama said, "Boy, why you saying everybody like you?" He says, "Well, I know everybody liked me because no matter where I went, everybody was clapping for me." So no matter where I went, everybody was clapping for me. And the mama looked at the baby mosquito and said, "Son, let me tell you, they weren't clapping, they were trying to kill you." Okay, y'all missed it, y'all missed it. In other words, uh, don't let, uh, the, the impression fool you. Don't, don't let the gesture and the, the, the fake appallses fool you. There are people who can pretend well. There are people who will look at you and laugh and pat you on your back and shake your hand, but can I tell you, they just pretenders. They ain't trying to celebrate you, they trying to kill you. Watch this, watch this. Not only, not only the pretenders, but, but there's another group, the opportunists. Yeah, they, they are, they come into your life just for the benefit of you. In other words, they are only there to flatter you, even when you are headed down the wrong road. They, they see nothing wrong even when you wrong. Oh my God. See, the opportunists are, are folk that have you ever know you was wrong about something? And you talked to somebody that you said they was your friend, and you know you was wrong, but you talked to them, and they validated your wrong, and you knew you was wrong, but they validate you? That's the opportunists. Lord have mercy. As long as they benefit from you, they'll be their friend. But when you no longer are a benefit, they will withdraw themselves, that's the opportunists. Uh, not only do you have the pretender, not only do you have the opportunist, but you have the admirable friends. These are people who come in your life because something they admire about you. They, they are attracted to you by certain qualities like your personality, like, like your fame. They, they like to be, they like to be seen around you because there's something about you that cause, that, that are mob about you, that are attracted. But as soon as they see something about you that they no longer admire, they will withdraw from you. These are the amount. So don't be, don't be surprised, folk that you was close to ten years ago, you're not close to right now. Don't, don't, don't be surprised, the person that you grew up, and, uh, y'all was B F F from second grade to twelfth grade, but now they're no longer worth to be on because maybe they are, uh, my, admirable friends. But I love this last one, which is the text tailor to teachers, is this unconditional friend. The unconditional friend are the friends that desire your good. These people become your friend not because of what they can benefit from you or what they can get from you. They, they are your friend because they true your friend, they will invest in you. And what I want you to notice something, oh, this unconditional friend ain't there because of what you got. They are there to add to your life, and so in this text, I want you to notice something. And the Bible says, in Mark chapter eight, and verse number twenty-two, watch the friend, watch the unconditional friend. "They came to Balsadah, and some of the people brought a man and begged Jesus to touch him." Oh my God, y'all gotta see this. They are in Balsadah, and the text says that they took the man. And the Bible says, "They brought the man to Jesus." Do y'all see that? I know y'all see it. They are in Balsadah, they are in this village, and they, and they homeboy is blind. Their homeboy got an issue, their homeboy can't see. And the text says, "Since they know Jesus, it's a miracle work." They say, "What we gonna do, we gonna bring you to Jesus." See, an unconditional friend, when they see you are in a place where you're sick, in a place where you need someone to help you, in a place where you are in a storm and in a valley, amen, an unconditional friend, they are, they are recommend Jesus to you, amen. See, you need some folk in your life that got a connection with Jesus. And when they see you in a bad state, where they see you need to detox, they will say, "I know somebody who can fix this." And the Bible says, "They brought the man to Jesus." Oh my God. See, I want, I love this because the man is blind because he can't lead himself to Jesus. The man is blind, he can't bring himself to Jesus. But he around other folk who see Jesus and saw his miracles, and they got enough sense to say, "If we can't fix you, what we'll do, we'll bring you to somebody who can fix you." Can I tell you tonight that I'm so happy that God has put people around me and friends around me who will come to me at my aid, amen, when I'm low and I'm down and I don't know what to do? They are come to me and they are lead me to Jesus. Don't act as though that you've always got to Jesus on your own because there are moments in your own life where you too down to pray for yourself. You are, there are moments in your life where you don't wanna even pick up your Bible. There are moments where you don't wanna sing a song, where you don't wanna hear a sermon, you don't wanna hear, but you need some friends who gonna say, "That's alright, I'm gonna bring you to Jesus." Notice the text, I love what these friends do. Watch what these unconditional friends do, oui, is in there. The text says, "When they brought him to Jesus, they begged Jesus to heal him." Ooh, y'all don't miss a shout tonight. They brought him to Jesus, but when they brought him to Jesus, they just didn't bring him and do, and say nothing, but they begged Jesus to heal him. See, y'all still ain't got it. That unconditional friends, they won't just lead you to Jesus, but unconditional friends, they feel what you feel. They hurt when you hurt, they have joy when you have joy because the text says, "They begged Jesus to heal him." Do y'all know what beg mean? That mean, that's a desperate plea. To, to, to beg, that's when you desperate. In other words, they beg Jesus to heal a illness or element that, that had nothing to do with them. But they beg Jesus like it was there. Unconditional friends, they hurt when you hurt. So when they pray to God on your behalf, they pray to God like they talking about themselves because they're so desperate enough that they want God to make a way for you and make a breakthrough for you, even when you can't plead on your, when you don't have enough strength or have enough faith to go to God on your own, you got some unconditional friends to say, "Listen, let me talk to God for you. Let me desperately talk to God for you." You need some friends like that. Is there anybody out here that know what I'm talking about? Knowing that there are moments where you don't feel like talking to God, you might well be honest. There are moments that, that you so bad in your thinking and your behavior and the, and the influence around you, you so, it's so bad that you don't, you don't even feel like you can get a prayer through, and you don't even feel like talking to God. But I'm so thankful that God will put friends in your life that are so unconditional that they'll say, "Baby, I know it's hard, I know it's rough, but I'm talking to God every night on your behalf." Oh yeah, you need, you notice what, the text says, "They begged Jesus." So, so, so if you gonna detox properly, get rid of that, those people who only taking up space in your phone. The people who only taking up space, if they don't even know what you got going on, they don't even know your struggle. They, see, they don't even recognize that you've been struggling, and they call you like they in the know and ain't none, they don't even know the how, they don't know the hell you been going through. See, see, you gotta stop giving the wrong title to people who don't deserve the title. So you gotta be selective on who you call your friend. Okay, y'all ready for the next one? Let me show you the next one. It, 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 not only do you need to be selective on who you call your friend, but secondly, don't miss the miracle. Somebody put in the chat box, "Don't miss the miracle." Don't, don't, don't miss the miracle, don't miss the miracle, don't miss the miracle. I need you to put that in your spirit tonight, don't, don't you miss that miracle because if you gonna detox properly, if you go, if they're gonna be a removal of toxic thinking, toxic behavior, toxic influences, you, you and I cannot miss the miracle. But can I be honest tonight? Everybody on this line is some juncture in your life, you have missed the miracle. And the reason you are still sick in your, in your predicament? Because you don't even see all the miracles that God has setting you up with. You think it's a mess, but it's really a miracle. You looking at it, and you said, "I can't believe I'm going through this," but God says, "I'm setting you up." But you missing the miracle because I'm, what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to help you with your shortcomings. I'm trying to help you with your character defects, but it comes with a price. And sometimes I gotta allow some stuff to happen in order for that to take place. I want you to notice something, let's play, y'all just, y'all just follow me. Look at verse number twenty-four, let's watch this, watch the text. The Bible says, um, look at verse number, the latter part of twenty-three. The Bible says, "He took the blind man by the hand, led him outside the village." Watch this. "When he spit on the man's eyes and put his hands on him." Now notice what Jesus does. Jesus put his hands on the man who's blind. Jesus says, "Do you see anything?" Y'all see that? In other words, Jesus spit, took spit, spit on his hands, put it on the man's eyes. And he said, "Do you see anything?" Verse one four, "He looked up and said, 'I see people, and they look like trees walking.'" Oh my God, walking around. Now, 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 this the problem I, I hear with the text while studying. Uh, the problem I hear with the text, because Jesus touched the man's eyes the first time, and the man can't see properly. It was only when he touched him the second time that the man was able to see properly. And when I read the text, I gotta admit to y'all had an issue because ain't this Jesus? Okay, y'all read the Bible too fast. The text says, "He touched the man, this Jesus. But when he touched the man, the man could see glory. He saw men walking like trees, but it wasn't clear. So Jesus had to touch him a second time in order for him to see clearly." My issue is this Jesus. Okay, third time's the charm, y'all ain't getting, I'm gonna get it to you. Jesus touched the man's eyes, and the Bible says, "The man see tree, men walking like trees walking around. He can't see clearly." Jesus had to touch him a second time. Now my question become, if you Jesus, Jesus, was you off that day? Is, is it, is it, is, why did you have to touch him a second time? See, when you studied the Bible, sad, and when you studied the Bible, you gotta ask real, uh, questions, real questions when you studying, when you don't understand, you gotta ask the right questions. And so my question was, Jesus, why in the world would you have to touch the man a second time if you so much divine and so much Jesus? Why take a second time? And then it hit me when I studied the text. This what the text taught me. This what the text taught me. That the second touch. Really wasn't for the man. The second touch was really for the disciples. Okay, let me, y'all, the, cause they missed, you missing the miracle. Y'all missing it tonight. See, sometimes. When God heal folk. It oftentimes ain't for the people being, the people who being healed. It's sometimes for the folk who watch. Okay. See, sometimes God will heal, God will do miracles. And it ain't for the person who's receiving the miracle. But it's for the person, other people that are watching. Y'all gonna get it right through in here. See, this is a blind man. Oh, my God. This is a blind man. And since he is a blind man. The text suggests, um, the text suggests to us that this man is blind. So Jesus is dealing with a blind man. Who can't see, who got eyes, but can't see. But he got twelve other men who are disciples. They blind men too, but they can see. Okay. You got a blind man. Who got eyes but can't see. And you got twelve men who got eyes. But physically they can see, but spiritually they can't see. Now, I need you to understand something. When the second touch. Ain't for the man. The second touch is for his disciples. Because his disciples, some way, somehow, they've been walking with him. They've been under his tooling, toolage. They've been, they've been with him doing with every miracle. And all of a sudden, Jesus gotta use this to demonstrate that you don't know me the way you look. You have missed the miracle. And I'm here to tell you tonight, as a church, many of us right now are crying about some stuff right now. We are, we are depleted from stuff, some stuff right now. Some stuff is killing us. Because God is doing miracles all around you and you don't even see the miracle. Okay, let me, let me, let me paint the picture. Go back with me to Mark chapter six. Go to Mark chapter six. I hope, let me, let me connect the dots, cause some of y'all ain't get it. Let me connect the dots. Mark chapter six, y'all go with me, Mark chapter six. And meet me at verse number thirty. Mark chapter six and verse thirty. Watch what the Bible says. Mark chapter six, verse thirty. The apostles gathered around Jesus. And reported to him all that had, had, had done and taught. Then, because so many were coming and going, they did not even have a chance to eat. Watch this. He said to them, come with me by yourselves, acquire place and get some rest. So they went away by themselves in the boats was a solitary place. But many who saw the, the, them leaving recognized them and ran on foot from all the towns. And got there ahead of them. Verse thirty-four. When Jesus landed and saw a large crowd, watch this. He had compassion on them because there was a sheep without a shepherd. So he began teaching them things. Watch this. By this time, it was late in the day. So his disciples came. This is a remote place, they say, and it's already very late. Watch what they said, send the people away. So they can go to the surrounding country and village and buy for themselves something to eat. But he answered, you give them something to eat. Now watch what Jesus said. Jesus says, I've been teaching, I've been preaching. They been here, I don't want to turn them away. So what I want you to do, I want you to give them something to eat. The Bible says, they said, they would take, they would take eight months of man's wages. And we go and spend and much on bread and give to them and eat. Jesus says, how many loaves do you have, he asked? He says, go see. When they felt out, they said that we are five and two fish. Y'all know the story, let me keep reading. Then Jesus directed them to have all the people sit down in groups on the green grass. See, that's a, that's, let me lean, lean in right there to tell you. That when God wants to do something in your life, God will need you standing up. In other words, God needs you to sit down, uh, and be ready to receive. But God, God don't need you. You have, you have a business, somebody try, you ever try to help somebody do something, they want, they want you to fix them something? But they standing up all around you. Well, you wouldn't need me if you, if you could do it. So Jesus said, what I want you to do, I need you to make them sit down. And so the Bible says, so they sat down in groups of hundreds and fifty, verse three forty-one. Take, watch this, the five loaves and two fish. Look up in heaven, and he gave thanks and he, and he broke the loaves. Then he gave the disciples, uh, to sit before the people. He also divided the two fish among all. Watch this. They all ate and were satisfied. And the disciples picked up twelve baskets of broken pieces of bread and fish. The number of the men who had eaten was five thousand. Now, I know that's familiar, y'all familiar with the story, but don't miss the miracle. Jesus showed them. How to make it off the master's mouth. Ooh, Jesus showed them, I know from your logic, it don't make sense. But I want to show you how to make it off the master's mouth. Our sister Beer ought to say, amen, because in the early days of our marriage, we had to make it off the master's mouth. Amen. There were moments where it just didn't add up. We, I don't know how we were still doing what we was doing again. Uh, God was still providing with the income we had coming in the house. It's all because we was making it off the master's mouth. And tonight, somebody need to hear this, that I know it don't add up to you, but God don't add the way you add. God don't subtract the way you subtract. Sometimes God will, God's attraction is really adding. God will do some stuff in your life that will blow your mind. So he's here with the disciples, showing them that I can feed. Uh, four thousand people and five thousand people with two fish in five loaves. Y'all see that? Now I need y'all, I need y'all, I need y'all to connect these dots. That's Mark six. Somebody say, Mark six, come on, oh, well, put it, put it, put in the chat box, Mark six, Mark six, Mark six. Don't miss the miracle, don't miss the miracle, Mark six. But watch this. Watch Mark chapter eight. Come on, let's study the Bible tonight. This Bible study. Mark chapter eight. Now, Mark chapter eight. Meet me at verse number one. Mark eight, verse one. The Bible says, during those days. Another large crowd gathered. Since they had nothing to eat. Sound like Mark six. Jesus called his disciples, those are the disciples, these are the black, these are the blind men who can see. They, they've been with Jesus, they experienced miracles with Jesus, but they can't see. Watch this. I have, they say, the Jesus called us up to, to him and said, I have compassion for these people. For they have been with me three days and have nothing to eat. If I send them home hungry, they will collapse on the way. Because some of them have come a long distance. His disciples answered, watch what they said. But where is, we, but we're in this remote place. Can anyone get enough bread to feed them? Wait a minute. Do you, have you forgotten? What he did in Mark six? But you repeating the same toxic thinking and the same toxic behavior in Mark eight? Oh, my God, y'all gotta see it. They missed the miracle. And he's trying to change their thinking, but they says, they said exactly the same thing. Watch this. The text says. Jesus at verse five, how many loaves do you have? Jesus said. Seven, they replied. He told the crowd to sit down on the ground, same thing. When he had taken the seven loaves and given, uh, thanks, he broke it and gave them to his disciples to sit before the people, and they did so, verse seven. They had few small fish as well. He gave thanks for them also and told the disciples to distribute, distribute to them. The people ate and were satisfied, same results. After, the disciples picked up seven baskets full of broken pieces. That were left over. Now I need to know something. That was left over in Mark six. And there was leftovers in Mark eight. See, I can't, I can't make this stuff up. See, this stuff is real, that you either gonna believe God or you ain't gonna believe God. Because God will help you how to make it off leftovers. I don't care what your bank account look like. I don't care what, what they calling you and what they saying. I'm telling you, if you really trusted Jesus and make it off the master's mouth, he'll make you live off leftovers. Watch what the text says. It says, it says, verse nine. About four thousand men were present. And having sent, and sent them away, he got into the boat and went to the disciples, verse eleven. The Pharisees came, watch this. And began to question Jesus. To test him, they asked him for a sign from heaven. Wait a minute. Y'all have seen my miracle. What other miracle do you need? You saw what I did with the five thousand in Mark six. You saw what I, oh, the, oh, five thousand, you saw what I did with the four thousand in Mark eight, and you still looking for a miracle? Some of us faith so weak. That how many miracles he gotta do? For you to know that he's God. Watch what happens. The text says, he tested him and asked him for a sign. And he sighed deeply and said, why does this generation ask for a miraculous sign? I tell you the truth. No sign, watch this, will be given. Then he left them, got back into the boat. And crossed the door. Man, y'all miss Jesus. See, 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 what Jesus is, Jesus, I ain't got no time to explain it. Jesus got back in his boat and he went on his way. Jesus says, I ain't finna go back and forth. I ain't finna be telling you, trying to convince you, if you don't believe I can bless you, then I'm not gonna bless you if you don't believe I can bless. I'm just gonna get back on in my boat and I'ma going on my way. Some of us can learn from Jesus. Because sometimes we try to convince folks that we are blessed, it gonna be a blessing to their life. But if they don't see you as a blessing, then you don't necessarily let them see you as a blessing. Just get back in your boat and you go and do what you supposed to do. Somebody better learn from Jesus. Somebody said, Jesus got an attitude. No. Jesus just trying to show us how to do life. Jesus is the type, see, I told you, y'all so used to American Jesus, but Jesus says, see, Jesus trying to show us how to do life. Jesus say, listen, you ain't got time trying to explain how you are blessing to people. I just walk away and do my own thing. Notice what he, the Bible says, he gets back in the boat and crosses to the other side. See, sometimes you gotta go to the other side. Sometimes, sometimes, stop convincing people that you can be a blessing to them. Stop convincing people that, that you, that you're trying to, trying to help. Stop convincing people. See, maybe God killed it. And maybe God said it's dead, and maybe you need to cross over to the other side, but you still keep doing CPR on what God is called dead. Can I tell you tonight, stop performing CPR on a dead situation. Notice what the text says, verse fourteen. The disciples, watch this. Have forgotten to bring the bread. They in the boat now, watch the text. They in the boat. And they forgot to bring their bread. They left their leftovers. Watch this. Except for one loaf. They had with them in the boat. So watch this, they in the boat, y'all. And while they are in the boat, they forgot about the fact that they left, they all the bread. They got one loaf of bread, it is twelve of them. Y'all see that? The Bible says, verse fifteen. Be careful, Jesus wa- warned them, watch out. For the yeast of the Pharisees and that have heard. So Jesus' mind is on what just transpired with these Pharisees questioning. Him being who he is. That's what Jesus about. But I know, I want you to know what the, the disciples about on. Now, these are men who witnessed the, witnessed Jesus' miracles, but they blind. They got eyes, but they can't see. Watch this. Verse number sixteen. They discussed this with one another and said, is it because we have no bread? Now, Jesus talking about something different, and they sitting there saying, how we gonna eat? They must been black. Because they missing the whole idea of what Jesus is trying, they said, we don't have no bread. Look at verse seventeen. Aware of their discussion. Jesus asked them. Why are you talking about having no bread? Do you still not see or understand? You got eyes. You got ears. Do you not see and understand? Are your hearts hardened? Do your eyes fail to see and ears but fail to hear? And don't you remember? When I broke five thou, uh, broke, uh, broke five, uh, five loaves for five thousand? And how many baskets of pieces did you pick up? They said twelve. And when I broke the seven loaves for four thousand, how many, uh, baskets of pieces did you pick up? They answer seven. And he says, you still don't understand? In other words, Jesus says, how is it? That you could be walking with me all this time? Watching my miracles. Watching what I do. And still don't know who I am? How is it that you got eyes and you can see, ears, and you can hear? And you are so messed up in your faith wall that you, you are the closest to me, but you still don't see. You have missed the miracle. And so in the same text. After Jesus says, you don't understand. They came to Balsad. And some people brought a blind, do y'all see what Jesus doing? Jesus said, let me show you what your problem is. Jesus broke the blind man. And the Bible says, he laid hands on the man's eyes. That's the first touch. Because sometimes walking with Jesus, you don't get it from the first touch. Sometimes it takes a second touch. See, I wish, I wish I had some believers tonight to be honest about it. That you didn't, you ain't got it right now, you still ain't got it. God had touched you with this miracle, and touched you with that miracle, and touched you with this miracle. And you still complaining, you still talking about, Lord, how I'm gonna make a way. But did one God with you in two thousand five, when you was going what you was going through? One he went with you in nineteen ninety-three, when you thought you was gonna die, but he provided for you? One he with you in two thousand three, when you thought everything was gonna be gone? What he says, and you still don't see? Cause you missed the miracle. So now I gotta touch you a second time. He's trying to show the disciples that y'all just like this blind man. That this blind man. Ain't got eyes, but he got more faith than you. Because at least he's coming to him. How is it that we can be with Jesus? We can, we can, we can study the Bible. Hear the word on Sunday, hear the word on Wednesday. And still go back to our lives. And say, God, how I'm gonna make it through this? God said, you still don't understand? Jesus said, really, you still don't get it? Jesus said, you have missed the miracle. Every situation that I had to come in your life and show up in, I was showing you who I was. I was showing you who I was in two thousand and twenty, so you can have the faith that you need in two thousand twenty-one. I came in your life and I did that miracle in two thousand eight, so you can have enough faith to keep pushing in two thousand twenty-one. He says, but if you still acting like this, if you still acting the same way in two thousand eight and it's twenty twenty, twenty-one, you missed the miracle. Don't miss the miracle. Jesus says, the reason I had to touch him twice. Is because I'm trying to show the disciples how y'all operate. So watch this, if, if God is gonna do what he gonna need to do to help you, be selective of who you call your friend. Don't miss the miracle. But lastly, watch this, don't go, uh, you gotta be done with toxic environment. You gotta be done, you gotta be done. Trying to help somebody tonight. You, you gotta be done with toxic environment. Somebody say, I'm done. Somebody put in the chat box, I'm done, I'm done, I'm done. You gotta be done with toxic environment. That's the influence. Those are the people around you that are influencing and influencing you. You gotta make up in your mind that if you gonna detox, if you gonna be helped, if you gonna be blessed, you gotta say, God, I'm done going back to what's keeping me sick. Notice what, what happens. In verse number. Verse number twenty-five. Once more, Jesus put his hands on the man's eyes. That's the second touch. Then his eyes were open, his sight was restored. And he saw everything clear. Watch this. Jesus sent him home. Saying, don't go into the village. What village? Balsada? He says, he said, listen. I don't want you to go in Balsada. You have been blessed. I have restored you and healed you and delivered you. And I don't need you to go back to the same place that probably had you sick in the first place. See, I, I need you to notice something. Uh, you, sometimes sickness happens. And I shared this with you a couple of weeks ago. Sometimes sickness happens, sometimes because of our own sins. And I'm not sure the text doesn't suggest, but it's interesting to me that what Jesus does, Jesus leaves the man out of Balsada before he blessed. See, Jesus didn't go, Jesus didn't take the man and heal his eyes in Balsada. But Jesus took the man from Balsada to bless. I need you to notice something. Go to, go, go to, uh, Matthew's chapter. Eleven. Let me read this passage. Matthew's chapter eleven. And I want to just, I want you, I want to give you an insight on Balsada, we'll be done. Matthew's eleven verses twenty through twenty-four. I want you to see this. Matthew's eleven. Verses twenty through twenty-four. Watch what the Bible says. The Bible says, then Jesus begins to denounce the towns where he had done so many of his miracles. Because they had, they hadn't repent of their. Because they had, they hadn't repent of their sins and turned to God. What sorrows awaits you, cousin and Balsada? For if the miracles I did in you had been done in the wicked Tyra and Sodom, their, their people would have repented of their sins long ago. Clothing themselves and burnt off and throwing ashes on their heads and show their remorse. I tell you, Tyra and Sodom will be better off in judgment day than you. And you people of Capernaum, will you be honored in heaven? No, you will go down in the place of the dead, for if the miracles I did for you have been done in the wicked of Sodom, it will be here, be, still be here today. I tell you, Eden, Sodom will be better off than judgment than you. Now, wait a minute, watch this. Jesus is condemning Balsada. Why? Because Jesus did miracles in Balsada. He showed, he showed his blessings in Balsada. And he says, while I was there, the people, they didn't have sense enough to repent. Matter of fact, I was there in Balsada not to discipline anybody. I was there just to show them my goodness and my, and my grace and my mercy and my miracles, and my miracles didn't even make them repent. Can I tell you, it's a dangerous thing that you always, see, sometime God does not discipline you to cause you to repent. Sometime God will send miracles your way to cause you to repent. And sometimes when he send the miracle, if you're so familiar with God, and you think God's supposed to do it, and he had to do it. God says, that I thought the miracle will gonna have your mind changed, but you still doing the same old thing. I thought the miracle won't have you to tie and give an offering the way you supposed, but you still robbing me. I thought the, I thought the fact that I did the miracle, that I showed you grace, and I showed you mercy, that you was gonna show other folk mercy. But that ain't even caused you to repent, see, sometimes you looking for God to discipline you to make you repent. Now, sometime God will send a miracle. He'll send a miracle to cause repent, and he says, I don't want this man to go back there. Don't go back to Balsada. Be done with Balsada. Because the people there, they don't even, they're so familiar with me. And they know I'm Joseph's son and I'm the carpenter's son, they can't even receive a miracle, so I'm not even gonna do miracles there. Because they can't receive, see, there are some environments that you are going in. And you trying to convince people to receive the new you. Now, but the new you, they don't want, they want the old you. And you going there, and you keep saying that I'm gonna save them, I'm gonna help them. But you, they doing more influencing you than you are of them. See, you gotta stop going back to toxic behavior and toxic thinking and toxic influence and going back in toxic environments. So here's the thing, here's the word tonight, you gotta be done. The question is, what's your Balsada? What is it, what is the thing, what is the environment, what is the influence that pulls you away from God? And we gonna honestly say, you really ain't seen nothing yet, you don't, you ain't seen the best version of me. Until you be selective on who you call your friend. Until, until you make up in your mind, you say to God, God, I'll be selective who I call my friend, but I'm not gonna miss the miracle. And I'm gonna be done with toxic environment, that's the message tonight. And I pray that this message bless you. That, 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 that you will, you will go home, go be at home and listen to this word and say, God, you spoke to me tonight. And I'm trying to detox, I'm trying to help myself, I'm trying to be a better version of me. And if I gotta do that, speak, Lord, I will obey. That's the words tonight, any questions tonight, I said a lot, any questions tonight? Uh, before we close, any questions tonight, any questions? Sister Cara, do I have any questions?
No, not this time.
God bless y'all tonight. God bless, I think I saw somebody with a question when I was teaching, let me see, can I find? If you put a question in the chat box while I'm teaching, I think I saw, but I, I couldn't read it. Can you put it back in if we have it was, if you have still, if I didn't answer the question in my teaching tonight? You have a question, please put it in the chat box. Any question, any question? Amen, 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 we're thankful tonight, again, uh, it is my prayer, it is my hope, if something was said, that will bless you, it's my hope that we don't just go through the motion. Uh, but it's my hope that you will literally take these, these messages and begin to use these messages in your life. How did the blind man know how trees look? Okay, so the question is, how did the blind, great question, great question, how did the blind man know how trees look? Uh, it is, it is inferred that the blind man hadn't always been blind. Uh, that's, that's, that's the only logic that we know, the blind man at some point could see. And he knew what trees look like. And so he ain't always been blind, he more like the man in John nine, who born blind from birth. So this particular man, uh, was, was, had eyesight at some point, but lost his eyesight. Uh, and now he sees men walking like trees because he knows what trees look like, because he's not always been blind. But that's a great question. Um, amen. Um, and it's my prayer, again, that something was said. That, uh, we'll be able to bless you, and we've been using these, these tools to be a better version of us than what God would have us to be. I pray tonight that you will be blessed and, uh, you will take these, these, this opportunity to work these steps, and I hope you've been writing these steps down. And you'll take these steps and be able to use them in your everyday, everyday life, amen. Uh, any prayer requests as we close?
In Matthew's chapter eleven and verse number twenty-eight. Jesus says, it's like this, come unto me all ye that I labor and I heavy laden, and I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you and learn of me, for I'm meek and lowly in heart, and ye shall find rest unto your souls. For my yoke is easy and my burden is light. Can you be honest and say that there are moments, there are times where you are dealing with pain, you are dealing with tragedy? You feeling hopeless, times where you don't wanna be bothered, times where you feel like you don't have it all together?
Somewhere deep down in my heart. I still love you.
And in those moments, in those moments, Jesus will say, come unto me. I am Tredanius Beard, I'm the minister evangelist of the Northwest Church of Christ in South Haven, Mississippi. And I want you to join us in a body of teaching for the next twelve weeks. As we talk about detox, twelve steps to restoring your hope. Let's be honest, there are moments where we don't have it all together. There are moments where we feel like that nobody really understands us the way we want them to understand us. And in those times, we need God to restore what has been broken. We need him to re, re, mend our hearts back together. Truth be told, we have to detox from some stuff, detox from people. Detox from places and detox from things. So as we begin this body of teaching, I, it is my prayer and my hope that you come with an open mind, an open Bible. To say, God, I need to hear a word from the Lord, to say, speak, Lord, I will obey. Look forward to it, may God bless you, man, bless you real good.